Welcome to the City Commission meeting, September 3rd. Susan, our mayor, Susan Adamcheck, will be joining us via Zoom tonight. So I'm Mayor Protam Karen McCullough, welcome. Would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Adamcheck?
She'll be here.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Here.
Commissioner Motta?
Here.
Commissioner Mitten?
Here.
Mayor Protam, we have four members present at the time. The quorum of three is met.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under one, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two proclamations. Could Melissa Bultwell please join me at the mic? Sadly, both of these proclamations have to do with suicide, and that's not a happy topic. Whereas, the construction industry workers brave extreme weather conditions, work tirelessly, and often shoulder the weight of immense responsibility to build the infrastructure that sustains our society. And whereas, construction labors are also at a greater risk of suicide than any other profession. And according to the Centers for Disease Control, the rate of suicide among male construction workers is four times higher than the general population. And whereas, 2012 and 2015 National Violent Deaths Reporting System data from 17 states indicated the major occupational group with the highest male suicide rate was construction and extraction. And according to a 2020 report from the CDC, the construction industry has the second highest suicide rate out of all major industries in the United States. And whereas, a 2020 survey of construction workers found that 14.3% of workers struggled with anxiety, and nearly 6% struggled with depression based upon symptoms or medication use. And whereas, the Associated General Contractors, AGC of Kansas, the Chamber of Commerce for the Kansas Construction Industry, and its partners have created the Kansas Construction Safety Network to promote mental health in the construction industry. And whereas, the Kansas Construction Safety Network has created a website, and it's all in lowercase, www.kansasconstructionssafetynetwork.com, that provides resources associated with drug abuse and mental health, and is accessible by the general public and the business community. And whereas, construction companies of Manhattan representing Kansas commercial, industrial, residential, and utility construction contractors and their employees have engaged in the following public-private partners: the Kansas Occupational Safety and Health Administration, OSHA, the Kansas Mental Health Association, Pawnee Mental Health, and Katie's Way. And whereas, the Kansas construction industry is proud to work in partnership with the above public agencies in bringing attention to the critical challenges associated with mental health in the community. Now, I therefore, in the name of Susan Adamcheck, our mayor, do hereby declare Friday, September 6th, 2024, as Mental Health in Construction Day. In the city of Manhattan, invite all residents of Riley County and the surrounding area to join the construction industry as we bring recognition to mental health in the construction industry. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor Protam. It is my, on behalf of the AGC and the Kansas Construction Safety Network and the entire planning committee for the mental health event, it is my honor to accept this proclamation. This event is held this Friday, September 6th, from 3:00 p.m. to 4:15 p.m., and it will be held at 1680, no, 1960. That's a better year. 1960, Kimball Avenue. This is a new event center, so it's the first floor space.
Okay.
Event space. Yeah, so it's open to the public, there's no registration, and there's no cost. So, we would like to see you there. We appreciate this community's support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a proclamation for Kindness in Manhattan Day. We could use more of that.
Yes.
Every day. Whereas, suicide is one of the leading causes of death in the United States, impacting individuals, families, and communities nationwide. And certain populations, including rural Americans, our elderly population, veterans, Native Americans, and LGBTQ youth, and, as we just learned, construction workers, face heightened risks of suicide due to various socioeconomic, cultural, and identity-related factors. And whereas, kindness and community-building efforts are crucial in preventing the social isolation and despair that can contribute to suicidal thoughts and behaviors. And whereas, Kindness Day serves as an opportunity for our community to unite in an effort to promote compassion, empathy, and understanding among all residents. And whereas, Mel Poehler, a cherished member of our community and dedicated educator, has steadfastly championed Kindness Day following the tragic loss of her sons Matthew and Kelly to suicide, turning personal grief into a powerful call for action. Now, I there, Karen McCullough, acting for Susan Adamcheck, our mayor, do proclaim September 14th as Kindness Day in Manhattan, and urge all residents to join together each year in honoring this day by demonstrating acts of kindness, fostering connections, and supporting one another's well-being. Let us reaffirm our commitment to building a community where everyone feels valued, supported, and understood, ensuring that no one faces their challenges alone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
I would. Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor, Mayor Protam, and the city commissioners for making this possible. It means a lot to my family and I. My family lives in Atlanta, but they're watching and are very grateful for this opportunity. I'd also like to thank Sarah Wesh, because she spearheaded this, and I found out after she had worked with the mayor to make this possible. That too means a lot to our family. And I'd like to thank Sidney Carlin, who has worked, dedicated.
You want Sidney, Sidney?
Sidney has dedicated herself to trying to have more resources and opportunities for people with mental health issues in our state. And she's a big champion of that, and I greatly appreciate it. She and I are close friends, and we've worked together on some things that have hopefully been beneficial to everyone. I don't want this just to be about my boys, because it's about all of us. And I have friends sitting here in the audience right now who have lost children to suicide. And I think all of us either know someone or love someone who deals with mental health issues or addiction, or we've experienced a suicide in our own lives. And so this is something we need to work together on. I'd like to share with you that things are already happening. Lori O'Brien from Eisenhower Middle School is working with the educators there, and they've already started implementing programs that they're going to do each year with their students to teach them the value of kindness. I just want to say a couple more things, and I'd like to be a little open and frank with you about my sons, Matt and Kelly. Matt was my oldest boy, Kelly was younger. September 14th will mark the fourth anniversary of Kelly's passing. Matt's been gone almost 15 years. No suicides are the same. My two sons' suicides were very different. When Matthew passed, it was a circumstance, rash act in the moment over a relationship with a girlfriend, and very unexpected. On the other hand, my son Kelly, my younger son, dealt with severe anxiety and depression for many, many years. And after the loss of his brother, he just got continually worse. And he became very, very ill. And I often think even today, the many probably random acts of kindness that people showed Kelly, maybe a kind word, maybe spending time with him, maybe encouraging him, that helped him find hope and strength to hang on for one more week, one more day, one more hour that my family and I got to have with him. And I'll never know all those people, but I think the point is that we all have our broken parts, and we all are dealing with something. And being kind can change a person's life, we just don't ever know. And in closing, I'd just like to read a little short fable. Excuse my tremors, I have a hard time with that. This is a story I told my children when they were growing up, and I share with my grandchildren. And in my 20 years of teaching, I always share this with my students. An old Cherokee Indian chief was teaching his young grandson about life. He said, "A fight is going on inside of me," he told the boy, "a fight between two wolves. One wolf is anger, envy, greed, arrogance, and self-serving. The other wolf is love, hope, humility, truth, kindness, and generosity." "That same fight is going on in you," the chief tells his grandson. The grandson ponders for a moment, and then asks, "Grandfather, which wolf will win the battle?" The old Cherokee chief smiles and simply says, "The wolf that wins is the one you feed." I think in all of us, we have two wolves, and the one that's going to win is the one we feed. I would like to just encourage you and challenge you to feed your good wolf, and for you to encourage and challenge other people to do the same. If we do that, we can change lives. I really do believe that. Thank you very much. I do appreciate it.
We have one person signed up for public comments. Public comments are those comments you might want to make about something that's not on the agenda. So if you're here to talk about some of the things on the consent agenda or the regular agenda, that will come up later.
Okay. Hello, commissioners. I'm Wendy White. I reside at 1961 South Bristol Avenue, Springfield, Missouri, 65809. I'm currently the vice president of sales for HCW. We own the Hilton Garden Inn here in Manhattan. Our hotel and our guests provide a significant tax revenue impact to the city, and we also support local restaurants, convenience stores, business owners. Many of our guests work with or for businesses in this community. I'm here to address the failed rollout and implementation of the pay-to-park system at the city-owned garage attached to our hotel. Excuse me, I'm finding a little bit of a cold.
It's okay. Thank you, Tom.
This is not about whether or not the city should be charging for parking. We understand the need to generate revenue to cover costs related to keeping the garage in top-notch condition. In October of 2023, the parking director distributed a presentation on recommendations to create a revenue stream for the garage. What we don't understand is why we were not consulted about the system that was selected. We could have helped avoid the current disaster that Manhattan's visitors and guests are currently faced with. This is not our first rodeo. We actually have three larger, full-service Hilton branded properties attached to city-owned garages in other towns, in other states, in fact. These cities worked with us to consider the guest end-user experience and selection for the implementation. In fact, many of them work with guest room keys, et cetera. And if you've traveled and stayed at a conference, you know what I'm talking about. So I want you to put yourself in our guest attendees' shoes tonight and just consider some of the issues that we're currently facing. And I know, Jason, you're very aware of some of these things, you've been working with us as well. So here's a list of a few examples that we've gathered just recently. During the recent KEMSA conference, the codes provided to us did not work for attendees. They had to reopen the app and re-enter them multiple times throughout their stay with us. For groups contracted with free parking prior to the implementation of the system, they were told they could use a promo code, but when they used the promo code, they're still required to enter a method of payment, and in many cases are still charged. So they have no easy way of requesting a refund. You cannot book a 24-hour period. So if you're staying at a conference hotel, you're obviously staying more than 24 hours, you're staying the night. So that is an issue that we're currently dealing with. Even if you go online right now and try to book a spot, the max you can do is 14 hours. So that obviously doesn't match up with the need for a hotel parking garage. So every, you know, conference we book, that's two to four days. You know, it's a constant hassle for the attendee to log back into the system to re-up their parking. Promo codes, like I said, are not lasting for the duration of the event. There's been software glitches, both with the system and with the app, that have led to issues. They've had promo codes provided for discounted rates, if they were offered a discounted rate, and in those cases, some of them are still getting charged the full rate. Again, no easy way to rectify that, and what a hassle to try to do that, right? So if you're attending a conference, you're obviously going to share this feedback with the conference planner. The conference planner's going to take that information, and they're getting it from multiple mouths to their ears, and that collectively makes it very frustrating for the conference planners. So one current recommendation that we've heard is that, is the idea to expand the current contract with this current system to allow our attendees to purchase advanced parking. And if any of you've traveled to conferences, I think you realize that's not a reasonable fix. Just last week, a frustrated meeting planner demanded that a member of our hotel staff be available to assist guests throughout the conference with the parking garage system. And that's just not a sustainable thing for us to do. To date, we have no effective solution to remedy these issues, and in our minds, it's very clear that this system just does not work for a hotel parking garage and for a conference parking garage. Obviously, conferences are not just day use, they're multiple days with overnight stays. We have repeatedly been told that there's limitations with this system to fit the need. And a memo from October of 2023 from the parking director, it stated that the city estimated the annual occupancy to be 45% for the garage, and currently it's averaging about 15 spots per day if there's not a conference. The city was to hire a parking ambassador, and this has not happened. The city was also supposed to have a janitorial person in place for the garage, and we haven't seen any evidence of that. In addition, the year-end report on the Agueville Garage shows that to do a capex on the downtown garage, you would have to see significant demand increases. And again, we recognize the need to generate revenue, but it just needs to be a system that works. Is that my one-minute warning? That's my time? Can I finish?
Yes.
Okay. So just, you know, I think we just need to collectively, as a city and community, agree that we can't treat our guests this way, and we risk losing their business, and our competition is already seeing blood in the water, and they're already, you know, reaching out and selling against this point that we have, this issue right now. So we would be welcome to reviewing any other parking system options and work with you to find something that works for both parties and our guests. And we want them to leave feeling welcome and have a good reputation. So, thank you.
Any other public?
Good evening, Mayor Protam, Mayor Adamcheck on Zoom, and commissioners, Josh Brewer, Habitat Free Mandy of the Northern Flint Hills. This past weekend, we had a home dedication, which is when our organization brings together a bunch of community organizations to celebrate the achievement of a homeowner who's purchased a home and the opportunity of homeownership that the community has created. That is an act of leadership, it's an act of love, it's an act of kindness, and I just wanted to publicly acknowledge those organizations tonight. Many of them are Manhattan organizations, Manhattan citizens, who, over the past 30 years, have come together and made that possible. Those organizations are Affordable Electric, the College of Architecture Planning and Design at Kansas State University, Bank of America, Bayer Construction, Catcans, Chansey Larson, C.L. Backhoe, Custom Wood Products, the Dean Kuganauer Trust, from the Ag Press, D.R. Plumbing, Heating and Air, the Flint Hills Renewable Energy and Efficiency Cooperative, the Flint Hills Area Builders Association, Flint Hills Foamworks, the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation, Green Sheen Paint, excuse me, Home Builders Institute, Heartland Granite and Quartz, High Tech Interiors, Howie's Recycling Trash Rollouts, Icon Structures, Interstate Glass Company, Flint Hills Job Corps, Kansas Housing, Call Valley Exterminators, KDK Engineering, Liker Concrete, Manhattan Technical College, who just cut the ribbon on a brand-new facility, the really nice construction tech program, Master Landscaping, MCM Concrete Materials, the City of Ogden, Polito Closets, Garages, and More, Raycore Structural Insulated Panels, SMH Consultants, Star Lumber, Titanium, Properties and Construction, United Rentals, Whirlpool Corporation, Wildcat Gutters and Exteriors, Manhattan Wind Supply, and the Youth Build Program as a part of the Manhattan Housing Authority and UFM. These organizations are coming together to advance homeownership, and we are so thankful for their service to our community. We look forward to seeing the city of Manhattan's name on this list in the future to advance homeownership and to preserve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Good group of people.
Yes.
Any more general comments? Are there any commissioner comments?
Yeah, I just, I hope we're sticking to five minutes per person today.
Well, I thought we would ask and see how many people wanted to speak after the commission comments.
Okay.
And then talk about that at that point, if that's okay.
That works for me. I just think for time and fairness, keeping it at that.
Yeah.
That's important.
Not longer than five minutes, right?
Well, yeah, not longer than five, but we can lower it. Could everybody who wants to speak on property taxes just raise their hand? Oh, that doesn't look that significant. I think we're okay with, are we okay with the five minutes? We don't want to cut anybody off.
Yeah, I think five minutes is fine. I just didn't want to, I wanted to make it clear.
Five minutes is the usual.
When it beeps, yes, that we're not extending. You're done at your five.
Yeah.
Or we could be here all night.
No. Any commissioner comments? Nobody's. Peter?
Yeah, I'll just say it, we're probably going to disappoint some of you tonight. We're always going to disappoint people. I hope that we disappoint you at a rate which you can accept. We are all doing our best, and we're in a very difficult situation with the budget. There is not an easy answer for what the situation we're in. And I hope we'll, I hope we can do our best and make a little bit of progress towards a sustainable, long-term budget.
We will move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are those of a routine and housekeeping nature, or those items which have been previously reviewed by the city commission and may be approved in one motion. Do any commissioners wish to remove anything from the agenda or ask a question about anything on the? Nope? Okay. In that case, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Do we need any public comment?
A public comment? Thank you. Okay. Seeing none?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Would you please call the roll?
Mayor Protam McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Yes. Could I just point out that the mayor has recommended the appointment of Greg Lorenz to the Air Force Advisory Board, and reappointed Troy Wilt to the Air Force Advisory Board, and appointment of Mark Wilson to the Historic Resources Board. Okay, public hearing considering revenue-neutral rate and the 2025 city budget.
Good evening, Mayor Protam, commissioners. I believe this is our eighth discussion on the 2025 budget, if anybody's keeping track. The assessed valuation, we've seen a 4.086% increase from the 2024 tax base to what is proposed as the 2025 tax base. This is the overarching valuation growth in the city of Manhattan within both Riley County and Potawatomi County. So the city limits itself is growing by just over 4% from all properties involved. For outside services, that's a 2.817% increase, and for city services, it's about a 1.26% increase. We have a $4.2 million proposed tax increase, 1.8 million roughly, RCPD and the library, and then 2.4 million for city services. It's roughly just under 4 mils at 3.99 mils. This is a breakdown you're familiar with, we've shown several times. The 3.99, that's the difference over here on the right, you can see the 2.76 mils on the city services that are in this general area. You've got the library and RCPD at the top, which reflect the 1.2 mils for that total of 3.99. The total property tax increase that was highlighted on the previous slide is here, the forecasted mil rate of 52.925 is up from 48.929 for this year. Any questions or clarifications on this? Like I said, you've seen it several times, wanted to make sure you saw the up-to-date one. So this is your total property taxes that have been levied by the city in the last six years. Obviously, a mil rate ranging anywhere from 49 mils to the 52. We were at 52 mils in '22 and in '23. We started having to address the revenue-neutral rate in '22, and you can see the increases and decreases in the mil rate over the last six years as well. This is the total property taxes that have been generated from those mil rates, all depending on where your valuation's at in your community. Mil's dedicated to the city services, these are 17.959 mils, we're up from 15.199 mils in 2024. As we highlighted earlier, each mil roughly worth $723,000, and we have just under $13 million in property taxes dedicated to operations and debt within the city. Your general fund increases from 45 to 47 million, 2024 to 2025. Overall, special revenue funds, bond and interest funds, obviously we're a debt enterprise fund, we're a water sewer stormer included, and our internal service funds, as we mentioned last times, where IT and our fleet reside, growing the total budget from 225 million to 229 million, just over 4 million. Here's your general fund comparison. We've talked a lot about projections, we had different scenarios for you to consider as we looked into all the departments financed through the general fund. We have actuals of just over 39 million in 2023. We project to be about 38.6 million by the end of this year, a reduction just under, just over $300,000. We had 39.88 million as a projected general fund total budget in August, and we have reduced that tonight for the hearing based on your guidance to $38 million. So we are proposing an expenditure budget for all these departments, where 70% roughly is the people who work at the city, to be a million dollars less than actuals in 2023, and more than likely a million, or about a half-million dollars less than we were projected through the end of the year. So what you see in combination is a reduction in expenditure against inflation and against actuals, but also a realization that the increase in the taxes on the 2.76 mil rate will start to bring those expenditures and those revenues closer together for the out years. This is a very busy slide, but it gives you multiple years' experience over the general fund, the Economic Development Fund, the Tourism Convention, which is where your transient guest taxes are, your Special Alcohol Fund, your library, Library Employee Benefit Fund, and gives you this total agency. and gives you this total agency request. You can see out to the side here just the percentage increase that you've seen in requests this year, all impacted either through property taxes, transient guest tax, or the use of Economic Development Funds. There are two that are left without a budget. We have the request basically at the level at which they were funded either the prior year or what we anticipate revenues will be for 2025. That process will unfold this fall, and you will be approached this fall with those roughly over 1.1, 1.2 million. The CisFab, the Community Sports Funds Advisory Board. Again, these are reflections in your prior slide of not being totally determined for 2025. There are proposed number. We obviously need to see just how those balances are as we move forward. We were able to utilize some of this cash towards R C P D's mental health caseworker earlier this year. Transient guest tax is very busy. There's a lot of moving parts with transient guest tax. We have projected revenues at 27, 2.75 million. 2025 expenditures, roughly 2.4 million in ass. You see increases from both D M I and A B A and from the C V B itself. We have about 1.3 million as a cash balance. The annual expenditures for transient guest tax typically, the C V B historically has been around 60% of the total revenue stream. We have just over $223,000 for debt payment for Annenberg Turf, $93,000 for Conference Center debt payment, and then we have the expansion debt payment at which a half percent of the T G T are dedicated. We have moved money out of transient guest tax into our general fund to help with downtown beautification. And we have some one-time party expenses talked about this year for the downtown garage as well as the elevator that is being replaced. In summary, as I mentioned, we have just over a 4% growth in our tax base. The 2.4 million or 2.76 mils is there to support primarily the general fund. Recommend a no cost-of-living increase for our, for our city employees and no increases in the step pay plan. The only pay that we do have within this budget is a union 2.5% increase for our firefighters. We'll continue to monitor revenue streams and make changes throughout the year. Again, we do not rely on property taxes for our operations within the general fund beyond the roughly 4 million this year, and next year it'll increase closer to 7 million. So the 38 million in expenses that we're going to hold ourselves to next year in this proposed budget, roughly $7 million of that would come from property taxes. Everything else would be funded primarily through sales tax, but there are a lot of other revenue streams that we have to continue to monitor because they're not guaranteed and they're not reliable. They all depend on the goods and services that are purchased within the community and the organization itself. You can't reduce, I'm sorry, you can't increase the budget tonight. You can reduce that 229 million. We're looking for direction on any changes as it pertains to the mil levy, as it pertains to the total budget, as it pertains to the general fund, as it pertains to even transient guest tax, and how you'd like to talk about those revenue streams and the requests from that fund. Tonight is first reading of the ordinance to pass the budget, and then the second reading will be on September 17th. October 1st is when our finance staff certifies the tax rate and the budget to our county clerks, both in Riley County and Potawatomi County. So your next steps this evening, there are two hearings tonight. You will have a hearing on the revenue-neutral rate that is required by the state of Kansas and another hearing that is required by the state of Kansas for the consideration of the budget. Those are two different publication dates, but tonight is the hearing for both of those. There is a resolution. The state is going to require you to consider and pass this evening indicating you plan to exceed the revenue-neutral rate, even though you have already sent out those notices and we made that determination in July. You will still be expected to pass a resolution. And as we mentioned earlier, the mil levy can't increase. It can be reduced as well as the budget itself. It cannot go over that $229 million figure. Once those hearings are closed, we'll need to open up the second hearing, and then we'll continue with the action items as described. Always looking for your direction this evening so we can bring back any adjustments for that second reading in two weeks. Questions or feedback on staff's presentation this evening?
So can we, can we talk about some of the things that will be gone without with our reduction of 1.8 million? I see a million dollars from Public Works. Can we, that's, I guess we could probably start there.
A lot of our targets, Commissioner, are looking back to our 2024 projected. And obviously, we've got some decreases other places. But this 38.6 we're monitoring every month and watching both revenues and expenditures. So for the most part, we've tried to equate our, our budget approach per department, if we can, closer to a reality that we experienced either in '24 or '23. So a lot of the department heads have come up and talked to you about what that looks like. We had presentations back in June that talked about reductions in those departments, as much as 13%. Recently, they talked to you about the 39.8, but identified some areas personnel-wise, expenditures, whether it's in contractuals or commodities that they would have to scale back on. But it's very difficult with that many people operating a $26 to $27 million payroll of your 38 million. With, you know, to trim back, it's, it's difficult to do without getting into potentially some attrition, potentially of a reduction in personnel throughout the multiple departments here listed.
And just to reiterate, have, we've removed the C I P fund that was budgeted?
Yeah. There, there's no equipment. There are no vehicles. There are no capital improvements for 2025. So there's some long outstanding projects and improvements to facilities. We're going to attempt to hold on for another year. We've got a roof leak down at the Douglas Center Annex that we had to fix this year. We've got multiple H V A C and heaters operating in facilities that have been in the C I P for several years. We're going to kick those out. I fully anticipate spending money out of the cash balance for emergencies, but really, that is all we are addressing in 2025. There, there are no new, again, equipment, vehicles, or capital improvements to our facilities or infrastructure within the community.
That was going to be my next question, was like, when something breaks?
Yeah.
Because it will, it's going to come out of the cash reserves?
That's, that's really the place we, we will take it. It's why we have it in the event of an emergency. We're trying to have three months of operating within our cash balance as an emergency reserve. Being so reliant on sales tax in our community, either an economic downturn or some sort of natural disaster that impacts any of our big boxes that generate pretty significant sales, we would be dipping into that account to continue to operate. We, we've operated a lot of years at a much lower rate, but it's at a risk. And our bonds at which we issue debt, our rating agencies, it's a very high priority to have significant, or just respectable or suggested cash balances within bond and interest within the general fund itself.
There's not a way that we could adjust our target cash balance to include a C I P, to be a little bit more proactive, is there?
The list of capital improvement projects that I believe staff and administration would have for recommendations would be those H V A C units and those items that we anticipate could fail. So adjusting it, it's kind of moving money out of one into another in the event that happens. Again, watching revenues and watching expenditures. On the expense side, we're constantly looking at our history and making sure we're not overextending, but we do incur costs delivering our services throughout the summer. They're just very unpredictable. We get into weather-related issues. We get into whether it's a summer storm, spring storm, winter storm. We have to facilitate resources out into the community to handle those things. Extreme heat, like in the water fund, obviously, you sell a lot more water. We've had a nice wet year, so we've obviously generated less in that respect. But as far as the, the general fund, carving out money or moving money around to increase the C I P, at this point in time, the 38 million from an operational standpoint, we feel like we can continue to deliver an amount of services that we can accomplish with who we have. They, they are going to be stressed. But again, overall, if we can get the increases on the revenue side and get the revenues closer to the expenses, we can set ourselves up for capturing growth and looking at any increases in the future that are equally matched with increased revenues.
What about our staff? I guess the same kind of concept with, with the cash reserves. Is there a way we could, I guess it would kind of be up to us if we're amenable to having a lower, like, forecasted cash reserve, if we could keep some of those personnel from?
So you're, you're suggesting, Peter, like bumping up that 38 million with the, and lowering the cash reserves? Because that, I mean, that's our, that would be the option.
Right. I guess that's, that's kind of, that was kind of my question. It's like where, what pieces could we move around to do that?
Yeah, it, it gets into eating into a cash balance if you want to reduce that, which we've, you know, we're forecasting with this 38 million and the four-mil increase of roughly a $9.3 million cash balance. Today is, it's roughly about nine and a half million.
Okay. That's the questions I got.
Other questions for Jason? Do we do public comment now? Yep. Okay.
They're hearings, so we have to officially.
This is a hearing. I will open the hearing to public comment. Please try, you may have five minutes, but if you can keep it a little shorter, we'd all be home a little faster. Please come up and tell us your name and address and sign in. Somebody?
Your list?
Hmm?
You got some.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have a list. Yes, I'm sorry.
Good evening. Thank you for taking my time. I'm David Munson. I live at 4701 Miller Parkway. My taxes have been raised $1,500 in the past nine years where I've been living at. And I want to say, we are like the grandparents that live around there. The four houses beside us have flipped four times because the people cannot afford the taxes. They can't afford the specials, and they can't afford their mortgages. We're the lucky ones. We don't have a mortgage. My wife and I do. But yet, you're going to say, well, my house is appraised $150,000 more, which it is when we bought it, but we don't plan to sell the house. I just want to know why you are increasing our taxes like that. And I got a letter from you guys saying you're going to increase it $500 more next year. So my property taxes have been increased. That is roughly approximately $2,000 in nine years since I've been living there. Yes, I like the streets. I like all the nice stuff we have, but you are running people out of there in really fast because, like I said, the four houses beside me had great neighbors, but they're all gone. I have four new neighbors in nine years' time in each house beside me because they can't afford the specials. Like I said, they can't afford the property taxes, and they can't, and they're losing their jobs here too. So it's just something I'd like you to consider to think about doing that, and thank you very much for considering my time.
Thank you, David.
Yep.
Elizabeth Parker. I live at 3708 Catherine Circle. I have lived there 32 years. My house is 32 years old. My husband and I at the time built, had the house built. My taxes have increased 63% in six years that I retired. From 2019 to what I just got for '24, they've increased 63%. I'm a lifetime resident of Manhattan. I've raised six kids in this city. They've all gone to Manhattan High. I have not been able to justify having $619 of my house payment every month go to pay taxes. I can't afford it anymore. I'm retired. My Social Security in that same six years has gone up only because of the cost of living increases, barely 18%. Plus, you tack on to that all the other exorbitant things that have happened since COVID and all the outlandish prices at Dylan's and everywhere else. What options do retired people have? I don't have any other way to make an income, but yet my taxes keep running up. I, I'm between a rock and a hard place. 32 years in a house that I have loved and owned, but it's a 32-year-old house. It needs a lot of repairs. But you think it's worth a whole lot more than I probably can get for it? And I'm, first time in 32 years, I'm considering selling the house, cutting my losses, and moving. Not because I really can't afford the payment on the house. I cannot afford the taxes anymore. I, I, it's, to me, to me, it's criminal that my taxes have gone up 63%. I think it's criminal. And I think any other person in this room that's retired and strictly on Social Security like I am has the same opinion. You're driving out the seniors, and the seniors are who built this city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for hearing me. My name is Patricia Heinsohn. I also am a retired senior. I'm a 76-year-old cancer survivor. I live at 2734 Kimball Avenue. You know, I like driving on the road in front of my house, but unfortunately, most of the time I can't. I have lived in Manhattan three different times. I chose here to retire. When I had rotator cuff surgery, the road was torn up, and I had to fight bulldozers to cross the street to catch at a bus to go to my doctor's appointments because I could not drive. And if I, even if I could, I couldn't get out of my driveway. So it has been torn up multiple times. So I am, then they tore up the sewer, and they took out my trees and my fence and all of that. And I appreciate the fact that they have been making improvements, but can we pick on another street? I'm sorry. Okay, now back to taxes. My tax rate has gone up greatly, but I know the reason, one of them, is the valuation of my property because I live at the corner of Kimball and Browning, and I think that's the big deal. It is, not that the house has changed, it's still a little house. It's the location proximity to the campus. When I bought it, When I bought it, it was a nice little house. It's a one-car garage, it's got a basement, but it's nothing fancy, but my taxes have gone up and the variance in two, in twenty-twenty-two, the year-to-year value variance was nine-hundred-and-eleven dollars from twenty-twenty-one, but when it went to twenty-twenty-three, you guys valued my house at an additional twenty-two-hundred dollars, and I didn't do anything to the house, and I don't have the twenty-twenty-four. But I'm wondering how those numbers are being calculated. So I, I do concern, I am concerned because I agree, those of us that are seniors that are on a fixed income and we want to live in Manhattan, many of us are finding it difficult to do because things have increased so greatly. And, you know, I'm a K-State grad, I worked for the university, I, I love the city, I love, I love living where I do, but eventually, many of us are gonna have to leave. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Patricia. Caleb Cosman?
Caleb Coben, nineteen oh-one Ransser, uh, lived here for about twenty years, and in the twenty years that I've lived here, I've, I've noticed a trend with the city. Uh, you all spend money like a buck private in the Army. Uh, we're driving around in a three-ninety-two Hellcat Dodge car that we paid way too much for. Uh, we've got a lot of really nice things in town, but the leadership and the foresight to pay for these things long-term, it's not there, not seeing the long-term plans for it. And when you hit an economic hardship, I have a degree in economics from K-State, Mr. Upfup here, uh, you gotta cut things out of the budget and, you know, in a house, you can't cut your food, but you can stop eating out, you can stop the entertainment, and you can stop the frivolous things, and that's what the city needs to do. They gotta cut out some of the frivolity that we've got going on in the city, and we're not seeing it. Um, and so, you know, if, if we're gonna keep increasing taxes, let, let's see some cuts. Uh, some people might have to lose some positions. If we're running the Flint Hills Discovery Center at a huge deficit every year, maybe we need to find a new use for it, maybe we need to sell it. Uh, these are things that we should probably consider. I'm not seeing a lot of actual cuts, we're lowering our budget on some things. Maybe we have too many people employed in certain departments, twelve million dollars for parks in Iraq, we got a lot of nice parks, maybe we could have a few less. Um, I'm a general contractor, and this Friday, you won't see me at the mental health, uh, convention, I'll be working so we can pay our taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Caleb. Charles, um, Sully? I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Charles Sully. I live at seven-two-seven Dehoff Drive. Um, I'm wearing the nicest clothes that I own, a little, little bit of a spectacle, faded black jeans, uh, Walmart, button collar shirt. Average income for your community per household dual income is only fifty grand, give or take. The average individual only makes twenty-something. We have a nice couple here who doesn't actually live here, they came here to witness what goes on in our community, so they wanna move here. Something deep down inside tells me they're not going to. I've made Manhattan my home. Because of the decisions that have been made in this room, I'm going to lose my house, a home that my wife and I worked very hard to attain. I just celebrated my fortieth birthday. I only became a homeowner just a few years ago. Continue to raise the property taxes, raises homeowners mortgage, raises renters rent. Who's gonna be left? How many people are you going to evict from their homes?
Do we have?
That's the real question, that's what you actually need to ask yourselves. How many people are you going to evict from your homes? How many people are you going to kick out of this community? That's what's actually happening. That's why I'm here today. I don't wanna lose my home. I love this community, I love living here, I love our parks. I agree, maybe we don't need so many of them, it's one of the reasons why I moved here. It's one of the reasons why I chose to retire here. It's one of the reasons I chose to make this my home. Please don't take my home from me. Please think about everybody else. Not everyone makes two-hundred-thousand dollars a year, not everybody has an extra income of fifty grand, give or take, plus your other occupations. It's what the interweb says, maybe it lied to me. I believe it all day. Interweb's a liar, but still, your average income home in this community cannot afford your tax increase. Your community cannot afford what you guys have been doing. We appreciate it, and we know that y'all are trying. I don't think anyone here believes that there's any malicious intent at all. I believe everybody in this community believes that y'all are doing what y'all believe to be right and doing what y'all believe to be best for our community. A lot of us are here tonight to tell you that you're wrong. Please listen to us. Please find another way to balance the budget. Please find another way to raise money or make cuts. Please don't take my home from me. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Those are all the people I have on my list. Please, John?
Hi, John Ball, thirty-one oh-seven Harrah Hay Ridge, Manhattan, Kansas, six-six-five-oh-two. Uh, I came here to hear the briefing tonight to, to kind of see, uh, what was going on, and I appreciate the, uh, the information. Um, and I do appreciate the attempt, because the discussion on trying to get down to a revenue-neutral rate, uh, I would just like you to ask to try to do better, uh, to get the spending down. Mill levies, uh, like sales tax is a percentage, so mill levy should never go up because as property assessments go up, you get an increased income to then balance the other inflationary actions that you have to pay for. So once a mill levy's set, it should stay the same, that allows all the citizens then pa, plan on whatever that mill levy is. Uh, now, we get hit kind of on both sides, and you're well aware. We have the assessment that you don't have to do anything, you get more money, uh, based on the current, uh, mill levy because of the assessment, and then on top of that, you add additional mill levy, which is actually a, a increase in taxes, a second increase in taxes that, that we have to deal with. Now, I happen to be blessed enough, uh, to be continuing to work and have income to, uh, to pay for my three-thousand-dollar increase in the assessment on my home for this year, okay? Uh, and now you're talking about adding additional mill levy on top of that to increase my taxes even more. I can accommodate that. I am one of the people in this community that can accommodate that, cause I'm still working. Now, when I retire, it's gonna be a different, different matter altogether. But mill levies should not increase because when you increase a mill levy, you're actually increasing property tax. We have assessments, they go up, you get an increase. Sales tax, the same thing, as, 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 uh, things we buy, the prices go up, you get a higher sales tax, you get more money. So you get automatic more money coming in every year, uh, based on those, those two things, and then you add a mill levy on top of that. Now, you've heard it mentioned, and I've certainly talked to people who have moved out of this, uh, this community because they could no longer afford their house. They have a fixed income, they had a good budget, they had a good plan, you know, so much, uh, so much to maintain their house, so much for taxes. Well, the money that they had set aside to maintain their homes now went to taxes, and then it all went to taxes, and then they could no longer maintain their homes, and so they moved out. Uh, you should be tracking that our population here in Manhattan is pretty fixed, if not declining right now. Multiple factors, tax, cost of living is one of those factors that, that personnel are moving out. I would just suggest to you, because you never, you never went to the staff and said, we wanna have a revenue-neutral rate this year, so let's make that plan, let's at least attempt to make that plan. As far as I can tell, that never happened. It was always, how much are we gonna raise the mill levy again? I would ask for next year, take a hard look at at least trying to maintain a revenue-neutral rate. You'll still get more money because assessments will go up and you get additional sales tax because the price of things are gonna go up, but I'd ask you to take a hard look at trying to maintain that revenue-neutral rate. The county has ma, has managed to do that, okay? The city needs to take a hard look at things that they can reduce. This is not the first time I've, I've spoke to this, this group about, when you build something new, you cannot just put in the budget what it costs to build it. You have to put in the budget maintenance operations and capital reinvestment, I heard capital reinvestment mentioned. Well, that has to be in the budget when you're allocating money to build something new because otherwise, you end up in a budget shortfall, which is exactly what we're facing, budget shortfalls. So I would just ask, I think this year, you're pretty well set, so the only question is, is how much are you gonna raise our taxes again? But think about it for next year, uh, and try to, you know, make a hard target to see what you can do to get down to revenue-neutral rate, okay? Thank you for your time, I appreciate you listening to me.
Thank you, John.
Do you really want me to sign?
Please.
Okay. I'll take this off to the side.
Okay. Other comments?
I'm Joe Knopp, uh, I spend most of my day at four-ten Humboldt, Manhattan.
Can you share with the group, please?
So people?
It, it's on video.
There's a lot of people behind you, though, can't see it.
Well, you're the only ones who matter right this moment.
Okay.
And I don't wanna, I don't wanna dilute the comments. It'll be over quick.
Uh, Mayor Adamcheck can't read that.
Why not?
She's virtual, I think it, I think it's hard for her to see it virtually.
Why isn't there a video on?
There is.
There is a video.
It's just too small.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. I'll read it. The facts speak for themselves on change over the last five years. Manhattan's population has gone down six-point-six percent since nineteen nineteen, twenty-nineteen. City employees have gone up nearly twenty percent. The growth of city spending speaks for itself in the last five years. While the Consumer Price Index has gone up twenty-two percent, the general fund has gone up sixty-one percent, rounded, and the total budget has gone up ninety-one percent. These are all numbers from your budget documents. Inflation in city revenue, while the Consumer Price Index has gone up twenty-six percent, property tax revenue has kept pace at twenty-one percent, utility revenue is up nearly fifty percent, and your sales tax revenue is up seventeen percent. Hasn't quite kept up, I'll give you a suggestion on why not. Sales tax revenue has gone up seventeen percent in part because there are fewer consumers, nearly six-point-six percent fewer citizens, eleven percent fewer students. That's the problem. Thank you.
Sign-in paper disappeared.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'm Ken Ebert, I live at twelve-eighteen Leon Ridge Drive here in Manhattan. I've been a resident of Manhattan since I came out here from St. Louis to go to school in nineteen sixty-five, and I never left. I do have to footnote that, I did get my degrees, uh, but I chose to live in Manhattan. I've taken somewhat of a, a deeper dive into budgeting, uh, in the city, uh, over the last few years, uh, not just the city, but school board, uh, police, county, um, and, uh, I don't admire anyone, uh, dealing with these budgets because it's very complicated. Uh, I can find numbers all over the place, and I do appreciate Joe's, uh, presentation of some of the statistics. I can't say that I, uh, found the same numbers, but, uh, they're, they're very similar, and, uh, I don't wanna belabor those particular issues, but I do wanna just make a, a general comment that nobody, uh, has made so far, and that is sort of the mixed messages that come from particularly the city. Now, you're just one part, uh, as I mentioned, we got school district and police, excuse me, police and, and county, but there, there are mixed signals that come from City Hall from time to time. Um, one of them was just a couple of months ago when, uh, there was a presentation about a revenue shortfall projection, and there was some, uh, due to a variety of reasons, I guess, uh, but in that same meeting, I believe, you then turned and talked to about a fifty-million-dollar swimming pool, indoor swimming pool. That's a mixed message. Some years ago, uh, there's, in fact, there are currently three TIFs, uh, Tax Increment Financing Districts in this city, and as I was kind of rereading some of those here the last few days, uh, some of the presentations, uh, on those TIFs said, well, they don't increase taxes because the, the, the taxes are collected, but they are diverted to public improvements and so on, but the point, uh, there is that they really do increase taxes because the, the revenue that would have been collected into a so-called general fund now has to be replaced somehow, and that, I believe, does, uh, increase, uh, taxes. And then the other thing is, uh, uh, some of you know, maybe all of you, I have served on the, uh, Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board now for, uh, eight years, and many times in those eight years, uh, there's been discussions about studies, uh, on affordability, housing affordability, workforce, uh, housing, and, uh, how the needs for that are discussed in one, uh, breadth, and then all the expenditures, and, and you've heard many or a number of people tonight, maybe others, uh, privately, but about how the affordability of their homes, uh, are diminishing to the point some are selling and moving out. So there, there is a mixed, there's mixed messages that come from, uh, not just, uh, the city, but all the taxing entities. Uh, I was, I don't know that I was prepared to hear, uh, the presentation that, that Mr. Hilders made this evening about actually reducing, uh, some proposed reductions, which was impressive, uh, uh, some weeks ago, or maybe a month or more ago, the, the message out there was that the tax increase from the city was gonna be fourteen percent, uh, and now I believe I heard four percent. But again, these numbers are really confusing, I've tried to read the budget books, uh, page after page after page of numbers and, and so, it's very confusing to the, uh, to me, and it has to be to a lot of others, uh, as well. But at any rate, um, the, the issue of taxes, reducing, holding in line, Mr. Ball mentioned, you know, the, the, um, mill levy naturally goes up with evaluations every year, those kinds of things. We just implore you to, to consider, continue to consider, uh, how we might reduce, uh, or hold taxes, um, to the absolute whatever of the, the employees, Joe mentioned, I had four-hundred-and-seventy-six employees in twenty-twenty-three and five-hundred-and-thirteen in twenty-twenty-four. Uh, Mr. Hilders, that evening, I believe, you presented a, uh, proposal to, uh, address the revenue shortfall of, uh, I guess that means my time's up. One quick final comment. Uh, it's been stated by one or more of you over time that few people- I guess that means my time's up. One quick final comment. It's been stated by one or more of you over time that few people come down here to talk about budget and so on. So I'm glad to see several others are here this evening. That's pretty much why I decided to come down here. I want you to know that there are people watching and listening and trying to decipher.
Can you make sure you sign in?
I can if I can find the paper.
Thank you. Mm-hmm. Other comments?
All right, so thank you for hearing me.
Sure. Hearing none. I'll close the public comment session. Oh, I'm sorry, one more. Come on up.
Five minutes goes fast.
It does.
Thank you.
My name is Paxton Lemoine. I live at 1725 Points Avenue here in town.
Think of a little bit.
Pardon me?
Yeah, over the mic. Yeah.
Yeah, I live at 1725 Points Avenue. This is my first time ever coming to something like this. So I don't know if I'm allowed to ask questions. Okay, okay. My question just came about from when I was looking at one of the documents that Mr. Hilders had presented. So is it possible to pull that, one of those documents up on?
Ask the question. It's just that we will not respond. We will not respond.
If you ask it, depending what it is, we may be able to address it in a different way in a little bit later. We just can't directly respond.
Okay, that's fine. No, it was just kind of something that caught me off guard there. So I guess I'll just have to.
You can ask it right now. We'll take it down. We just got to get through your.
Okay, it was about, I think the budget for 2023 was around 39 and a half million or so. And then the one that is newly proposed is at 38. So I was just kind of curious as to the mill levy going up, but yet everything going down there. So if there's a little bit of clarity that you can shine on that for me, that's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, anybody else? Okay, then I will close the public hearing. Just a couple of factoids that might help you all. Remember, the city budget is only about 44% of your total mill levy. And of that, the police budget is about 81%. The library budget is another four. So the city only has about 14 cents per dollar to deal with in the general fund. Just information. Okay. So we've conducted the public hearing. Commissioners, comments?
Yeah, I just want to appreciate everyone coming down and hearing the comments. I think someone mentioned that we don't get a lot of people down here, and I appreciate you being here. I think the comments are very relevant because as someone mentioned, even without a mill levy increase, your taxes keep going up because of the appreciation. And I think sometimes it's, you know, we always say the averages are one thing, but you have some people where it really goes up, and a lot of them can be, you know, our retired folks. That's why last year we tried to keep that residential rate down as much as we could. I think someone else mentioned too that we, you know, we got a budget that we gave direction for because we gave it at a very high level. So there never really was a challenge to say structurally change something to get us to a, to get us to a lower number. Having done a lot of budgets in my time at this level, no challenge, you don't get, you get what you expected out of it. I'm just going to run through a few items here that, because I think we can take this number down appreciably. And actually, what I have listing isn't even necessarily expense cuts. But in this budget, we have close to $400,000 in increases to outside agencies, which we have the discretion, that's for the transient guest tax. I don't see how we give out 20%, which come out to about 20%, I believe, if you take them all in total, while we're doing all these cuts and raising taxes and everything else. There may be some of those agencies here if they would like to talk and make an argument for their increase. I would just ask, you know, your increase means either higher taxes or bigger cuts. And so is it worth it for your group to get a, in some cases, a very substantial increase, which is going to mean higher taxes or bigger cuts to the city?
John, can I jump in on that one, or do you want to go through your list first? It doesn't matter. Okay.
Also, when we were going through the budget before, we had ATA in the general fund. We said move it. It's 293,000, but I didn't really notice much reduction that came with that. I realized the numbers were changing, but I found that very difficult to try to move 300,000, but yet the number really didn't go down. The number really kind of went up some with it. So my challenge is I still want that 293,000.
Wasn't that in the EcoDivo Fund last year?
Well, we, no, no.
Okay.
So that's where that was. We talked at the last meeting, which I was ready to vote no on that Lee Village, Village Cash was coming out of the general fund. But then we said we could move that there, but it really never was going to come out because we were going to sell some property and move it around. So my challenge would be that property was going to be, or hoping for over 400,000. It would at least get some of that money back to offset some of this. And then this one, a lot of people won't like. But we've got in the budget right now for cost recovery to parks and wreck at about 26.4%. Best practice is 35 to 40%. I'd say we need to shoot for like 30%, which would get us another 389,000 that we could take out. Now, someone else is going to have to pay that because it means that fees are going to go up. But they're going to be the people who are actually using those services versus just covering it in general tax revenue. So my numbers there come out to about 1.3 million. So I think those are definitely things we need to entertain, and then I would still challenge to get this number a little lower.
Oh, go ahead, Jamie. Sorry.
No, it's okay, Peter. You can go.
So that 1.3 million, is that on top of the 1.8 from what was, like between what was presented in August and tonight?
I actually used the, I actually used the number that we got very early, which was about 11 and a half percent increase, which was 37,757. That's where I started. And back then, you know, we were still thinking of the 293 being in that, that number, which is like was an 11-point-something percent total revenue increase on the taxes. So yeah, I started a little lower number. I think staff would argue with me on the 293 because they're saying that came out, and probably on the 260. So they would probably say those were already in their numbers.
Yeah, I think they were.
Right. But I, like I said, their number kept changing. I took a point in time where we actually had a lower number. But I will.
I mean, the comment I wanted to make about TGT and continuing to invest those into our revenue strategies is that one reason we're in this situation is that our sales tax revenue is not where we want it or need it to be. Those entities that are getting funds from TGT, that are getting TGT funds, those are our revenue strategies for our city. If we are investing in them and giving them money, that money should, if they're doing what we're tasking them with, should turn around an increase in sales tax dollars, which will then alleviate some of the burden, either property tax or give us that additional expenditures that we can have versus moving those over to our expenditures. We're not going to see the same, we're not going to see the same return. I understand that's very callous because that's paying for positions. Those are revenue strategies for the future. I think with that, we need to put some expectations with TGT in, we need, sorry.
It's okay. Transient guest tax, that's what she's talking about.
Sorry, I was eating my dinner up here and it is sitting there. So I think we need to tie their funding to our, where we're at sales tax-wise, where we are with TGT, and use that going forward. But I'm still for, I don't want to see that money move over to the general fund. I think that, that money, now, I don't know if it's an all or nothing situation. I know that in talking with the entities, I know Gina and I and Marcia and I spent some time discussing what those strategies are and how to return that money via sales tax, you know, more sales. Sorry, Peter, you go. I'm going to drink some water.
Okay, maybe just add something. I forgot my comments too, that TGT transient guest tax, which we use for things like the Convention and Visitors Bureau and some of our
Athletic.
Business associations, athletic things and everything else. But it has to do with tourism in the city. One of the other things tourism, the city takes a big toll on are our streets. And you know what the conditions they've been in and how we've been trying to find money to spend on that, which is something out of the general fund. We have garage maintenance, which that downtown one is a big bill coming up. And then we also have parking services, which we have to do. And then you've got the baseball, football and baseball games and everything else. And we know we have things like fake Patty's Day and everything else. There's RCPD, which is a lot of costs that has to do that as well. So when someone says, well, why are you using transient guest tax just to pay for the general budget? It's because a lot of these items that tourism takes, takes its toll on the community and things need to be paid for as well.
And John, I agree with everything you just said about how the impact tourism has on the city. I don't see how we are getting out, you know, we're very dependent on sales tax. If we're not upping property taxes, we do need revenue. And I understand, I think John Left, when he's talking about hitting that revenue neutral rate or what he's saying is not increasing mills because of the valuations, that's, that's fine for a community that's not trying to grow or trying to improve. And if it's, if we're wanting to just remain steady forever, that's, I understand how that works. I think we are kind of a bustling community. We're growing and expanding and wanting to have tourism. I just think we need to look at those strategies for how we are going to be bringing in more sales tax or we're going to be here having these exact same discussions and continuing to tax our population instead of trying, and I get sales tax taxes our population as well. But when we're putting it in the hands of tourism, they're creating the events, they're booking the conferences, they're doing all of those things. And we have to keep investing in our revenue strategies or this conversation doesn't change year after year. Which is where I think we also have to put in those parameters and those expectations and those measurable goals in order to create some funding in the future. We need to incentivize when it's great. And then if our sales tax isn't there, we need to.
Could we maybe break out some of these to make it clear to everybody? The transient gift tax people are asking for an increase of 300,000. Is that right?
I go by John's numbers, which is 400,000. I haven't double-checked his, but.
You've got the Convention and Visitors Bureau, which would be a $267,000 increase. Downtown Manhattan Inc.'s a $93,000 increase. Manhattan Art Center is a $6.3000 increase. And the Aggieville Business Association is a $30,000 increase. All pretty substantial percentages increase, which again, you're talking about, you know, we're doing cuts, but we say we have to do some pretty high percentage increases to these outside groups.
I mean, I do feel that we're asking staff and all the people who work for us to face a year of sort of austerity and to bump up Chamber and sales tax. I mean, TV, I mean, it seems to me that they should also be pulling in their belts a little bit. I have no problem with giving them, you know, what they got last year. But I do think that perhaps if we're cutting, I mean, we need staff in finance. We need more engineers. We need more staff. We just can't cut to the bone. We have to have people manning the water department and the sewer department and that kind of thing. It's not a question of we're, we have too many employees. So we're asking sort of everybody to kind of be as frugal as possible. I am not against asking the Chamber and the transient guest tax people also to not cut to the bone by any means, but just level off.
So point of clarification.
Yeah.
John, when you're saying, let's just use just that fund because we're talking about that, that $400,000, you're not wanting to take the budget and move it to 38,400,000. You're saying not increase the mill levy. We have this 400,000. We don't need to increase the mill levy to four. We can increase it to.
Three, four, five.
That less 400,000.
Okay, Karen, are you saying, if you're wanting to use that 400,000 to fill positions and do all of that, are you, are you suggesting, or are you saying?
I'm agreeing with John. We could lower the mill levies. This would be slightly. Obviously, the major, majority of the mill levy increase is the police department. And we have signed off on that. I signed off on that. That was, you know, that was the $2 million up. He didn't. Yes.
John did not sign off on that.
But I think, I'm just, you know, I do not think we should go to zero mills by any means. I think we went down three mills last year, which is part of the problem we're having right now, getting back to that level place that we were at 2023. You know, you can't go, you can't go back up as easily as you can go down, quite frankly. It's sort of ratchets. And so even going up three mills would only get us back to the level of mills that we were two years ago.
Right, and doesn't account for RCPD and library.
Yeah.
Needing to up theirs.
Fire Department.
And right, and there was like a 13% valuation increase last year too, so.
I think you have to talk to certain people. I've talked to people whose valuation went down. You know, I mean, it's, one person told me that there was down $200. So they were like, so I, the city has no power over what the appraiser decides your, the value of things are. But the public can go in and ask for a second opinion.
So another point, just because it came up, our focus has been on that cash balance.
Yes.
Some of the changes from 2023, trying to answer the question that came up. Jason, can you kind of, I mean, our focus has been on that cash balance, which is some of the changes we're seeing and the expenditures coming down is trying to preserve that, talking about from 2023 to now.
Yeah, I can pull up that general fund historical and future forecast. It really highlights the difference between revenues and expenditures. And when you look at the last three, four years, our expenditures have outpaced our revenue. So bringing down the expenditures from 39.8 to 38 is only half of the equation. Moving the revenues up to try to meet it is what the intent behind is, the budget we presented. And we're within about a million dollars. We were about seven, well, we, last, this, this year is forecasted to be about a $4 million difference between revenues and expenditures. Last year, 2023, we were closer to $7 million difference. So we had this influx of federal money that came to the city, well over $15 million, and it has sat in that cash balance and been eaten into or eroded away without increasing city taxes. And I know, folks, your taxes are complicated. There's a lot of different entities at play. But when you just look at the city of Manhattan and what these folks control, not PD, not the library, not the school district, not the county, they don't do the valuations. When you look at what we're talking about, we have eaten into our cash balance as a major play to fund the city. We're trying to get the revenues and the expenditures equal.
And I do think it's really important that people understand the police department expenditures in 2023 were 20 million, in 2024, 21 million, and the budget authority for this next coming up year are 23 million. So that's three million up in two years. We have no, we have little input on that. And we have made it clear to Director Pete that we have got to somehow get a handle on this in the future.
Yeah, one thing too on that last budget, because I was on the commission when we did that budget and we lowered the mill levy. And the city manager at the time said, you know, that didn't want us to micromanage. And the city manager at the time said, you know, that didn't want us to micromanage, he'd figure out how to get to that number. We said, fine, we'll let you do it, but we really want some structural changes, not just take money out of the reserves. But when we got the budget, all the, it all just came out of reserves and there really wasn't any structural changes at that time. I remember saying at the time, I was disappointed in that. But you need three commissioners to do something about that. While we had three commissioners for the vote, we didn't have three to do anything more than that.
I'm wondering if Susan has any input she'd like to give to this?
Thank you, Karen. No, I, I, I'm following this avidly. I appreciate the comments that were made by the members of the public. John, I appreciate your efforts at finding some more wiggle room in the budget. Just keep talking amongst yourselves. Thank you.
John, I, I will, I, I agree with you that it, it would not be out of line for us to ask, or for, to, to not increase the outside services this year, especially considering the, the measures that city staff has made and, and cut down their budget. You know, it, it doesn't look like a lot on the, on the spreadsheet, but when we talk about things that we haven't done this year, we haven't done those capital improvements, we haven't done pay raises, we haven't hired folks that we probably ought to be hiring, we haven't done vehicle replacements that were planned. And we won't do those next year. So I, I think if we're asking city staff to, to, as, as Karen was saying, to, to have a year of austerity, it would not be out of line for us to do the same with, with outside services and, and try and keep that, that mill levy down at least a little bit. Yes?
I just want to interrupt. I was, I thought I understood that at least one of the outside agencies had cut their request pretty significantly. But yet, that's, that reduction is not reflected yet in the numbers that we've been seeing. Are we aware, and I guess, Jason, this is a question for you, are we aware if any of those entities are planning or have already mentioned to you that they will voluntarily be reducing their asks?
I know a lot of them are either in attendance or watching this evening, Mayor. We have not received anything formally from the outside groups requesting.
We do, we did publish in the paper, however, that downtown business district, 106.
Is that the BID?
BID, yeah.
That's not what we're talking.
Oh, okay, sorry.
You're good. It's easily confused. There's a, yeah, the improvement district versus the transient guest tax request.
Okay, yeah, you're right. Sorry.
No problem.
Maybe just to clarify, Jason, if we were to make the decision not to do those increases, is that approximately 400,000 we can apply to the general fund?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, and I, and I don't want to be a broken record. I just get a lot of heartburn with taking one-time money and shoving it into the general fund, because you'll be right back here next year talking about the same amount of money, if not more, on top of it. Now, I, I understand it, we've done it for a long time, but I do feel like it's a big reason why the gap just keeps getting bigger. And $400,000 out of transient guest tax revenue stream, you just want to leave it as a cash balance? Fine with that. Obviously, we're moving over a substantial amount of money from TGT to the general fund to prop up that cash balance. I get that. Moving it over to do a one-time year expense, keeping the expenditures the same, but using it as a revenue stream, you're setting yourself up for the same conversation next year.
No, I, I realize that. The, but I just wanted to clarify the point.
Yes.
That if we were to do that, we could take the 400,000 off of it because it hasn't been applied in any way at this point in time.
You're accurate.
So, so what you're saying is we're not actually cutting expenses by?
Well, it would have been, if we give it to those agencies, it'll be spent, or we can spend it as part of the budget, or we can, or we can take it as lower in taxes. So that's, to me, that's the trade-off. Either increase taxes by another 400,000 and give them 400,000, or we don't give them the increase, because we're not cutting anything there, but we are cutting in the city.
The, the other point I would make, you're talking about revenue that is going to come in over the next 15 months. And predicting what hotels will do in this community over the next 15 months has been problematic. It's been difficult to do. But you're, we're maxing, well, would we leave about $300,000 as a balance in our forecast arena?
About 250.
250. So, so you got that? You got that cushion, but you, you, you get it drilled down too tightly. And we're already seeing, that's why we realized $3 million in transient guest tax revenues in 2023, and we're already seeing a 2.6, 2.7 million forecast for the next year, because the last two quarterly payments from the state have not kept up with where we were in 2023. And we're seeing the same thing on sales tax. I saw, I heard that comment earlier about the robust nature of it and the inflation. That is not the case. We are seeing less revenue than we did in 2023.
So if that's the case, then how did we forecast, like, where did this, you know, one, the, the 1.6 million for CVB, the, the 20% increase?
They're basing it off a forecast we put together, last two years and, last two payments in 2023, first two realized so far this year.
Mm-hmm.
We forecasted. But again, that's a forecast based on the last four quarterly payments.
Right.
The next four is what you're basing your real revenue.
And they don't get it if it doesn't show up.
Correct.
But no, I understand that. And so we got 250,000 in the bank, and like our other revenue streams, we'll have to watch it, see where it comes in. And if it doesn't all come in and it uses up the 250, it would get into that other reserve number.
So what's our long-term strategy? Because we, the same group is going to go through this again next year. And what does that look like next year?
I think we need to get through this year. We need to look at things structurally again, going forward. Again, I think we need to look at that cost recovery number and see what we can get here. And, you know, may have to make some hard decisions too. A lot of people talk about the parks, what are we, 29 going up to 30 or something else? We've got, you know.
Yeah.
We, we need to do some, you know, fundamental structural looking at things. And I'm just trying to keep the impact down or, or reasonable for this year, because they're still going to, even if we do this, it's still a big tax increase.
Yeah, so.
And fundamentally, I just have a hard time with city cutting and taxes going up, giving those type of increases to, you know, outside services.
I do think we can take a very, very hard look at the cost of policing and find some ways to perhaps level it off. You know, going up a million and a half every year for three years just is an awful big bite.
Yeah, the other recommendation I would have is when we're looking at the alcohol fund is just be more prudent with how much we give away of that this year and keep a little bit in reserve. And when we look at things like the police department or other areas where maybe we might be able to offset costs where it fits the statute, it would provide us some leeway. Right now, we really don't have anything, it would be too hard to do.
I, I think it's, I don't, I'm not going to promise that we can do something about the police budget, because I think one of the major services we provide to the community is safety with fire and police, and those are both two of our most costly activities. You know, I mean, I'm less concerned about potholes and more concerned that, that Aggieville is safe after 11 o'clock at night, which is a serious concern at the moment.
But, I mean, Director Pete is looking into things. I think a lot of his town halls that he's going to be doing when talking about what services you want, but also what's your priority of those things, what things could be cut back? And they are looking into things like lean sigma that they can do in policing and things of that nature to try to bring down costs. So again, there structurally, I mean, you know, he's got more experience under his belt now, being in the department.
I think that's probably something that I struggle with, is that we haven't done that prioritization and structural analysis of our budget. And I know it's going to take time and, and effort, you know, and, but I would really like for us to do that, you know, thinking next year. This is a really weird year, given leadership changes and things like that. It's just, it's weird. I think we can all just acknowledge that. But yeah, I, I don't know, it's weird.
I would just say I'm not happy with what we're doing here, because there's no money in the CIP. We're not going to replace any cars or trucks or vehicles or no plows, that kind of thing. I mean, you can't do this year after year and not suffer, because then you're spending all your money on maintenance. But I am willing to concede that, that 400,000, since we're asking everyone to try and tighten their belts, as I said, I think we, it's, we're not being unfair to asking those groups.
I, I mean, I don't know that it's about fairness, it's about our, our revenue strategies and our plan to not be in this situation next year. And so if we use that money to then lower the property tax, you know, the, the increase to that, I understand from the individual level of, of not wanting to tax individuals, I don't want to have to pay more in property taxes, and my home values went up 33% in the last two years. But it's, it's part of, I mean, it's part of the decisions we have to make. And if we're talking about wanting to do CIP and get all of this stuff done, but then not willing to go there with the, the mill levy, those feel like different or opposite objectives. And I understand when people are saying, what are the frivolous things? That, that was one of the comments tonight, and, and I challenged somebody to, to really, what are the frivolous things? Because we know quality of life is incredibly important to people who, who are here. We know people don't want us to, when I say people, I'm talking about like the whole of the community, aren't wanting us to go and cut swimming pools and, and we just, we have a sales tax pass that gave us the rec centers and gives, and that gave us, is going to give us CECO and expanded trails. So people are wanting us to invest money in those things, and the reality is, to do those things, it does cost more money going forward. So I, I mean, I do think the city is doing, you know, the 38 million feels appropriate for this year. And, well, for 2024 and 2025, I think we're, I'm still, I know where I'm still at, is I don't want us to not invest more money in our revenue strategies, because we need to keep investing in our revenue strategies, or we're going to be back here talking again about property taxes next year even, even greater.
Yep, you're absolutely right.
And.
But the question is, what can they do, they're getting 1.3 million now. What can, what more can they do to really bring in sales tax dollars with 300,000?
So, so I do think we then need to set up, what are their performance?
Measurable.
Measurements. And we have to hold them to it and tie funding to that. I think anyone that we're, I'm going to say giving money to, that is an expectation that we have to come together and say, here's the metric we're using. For me, for TGT, it's where are we at with sales tax dollars and TGT and coming up with where that, that meets and, and establishing the funding from there. I think with, even with the Chamber ECO Devo, we have to come up with measurable performance criteria and tie that to funding. I don't know how we do that in our social service funding, and that's something we haven't talked about tonight. They're, they're getting at this point the same amount that they got last year, so we haven't, I was waiting for John to bring that one up, because he usually brings that up and is the bad guy, and he didn't today. But I think anyone who is requesting money, who doesn't work for the city, we have to put performance measurements around it and hold funding to that.
And you're right.
Yeah, I think, I agree, Jamie. If, if, we do need, I mean, we need to have that regardless.
Yeah.
It's, it, I think that should be kind of a non-negotiable. And I do hear what you're saying, you know, there, there is a saying, you got to spend money to make money. And things that we want to have to bring people in do require some investment upfront. You know, I know, I, I've, I've talked with Gina and Marcia too, and I, I really appreciate what Gina's trying to do with downtown. I, I, I think that that has potential. And, you know, dollar-wise, it, it's, it is a, a large percentage increase, but dollar-wise, it's a rounding error. So I want, but I do wonder if maybe we can be a little bit creative with some of those things. And now we're kind of getting into which, this should always be a hard conversation for us, I think, because we should be held to a high standard of, of budgeting, but, you know, so we're kind of getting into nickel and diming here. But can we take some of that increase for, you know, for Aggieville and downtown, out of that 19.32% that CVB is asking for, instead of elsewhere in, in the TGT? Now, I know it's kind of, in the overall, it's still coming out of transient guest tax. What?
And, and I, I think you're totally right. And I've always said, I don't like getting to this point and nickeling and diming. Let's take 5,000 off the MAC. I mean, no, we should be making these decisions in January. And I think probably our, our retreat in January was taken by some staff as okay on certain things without understanding that many of us were coming, were new or coming back and hadn't caught up, me. So, you know.
I think it took us a while to really see the full picture, too.
Yeah, well, it does. I mean, there's no question.
It's complicated.
This is complicated.
But the thing is, if we don't want to take this look on that dime, then we never add up to anything.
Yeah.
You gotta build off of these.
No, I, I think.
I mean, the total number's 400, that's a decent number.
Yeah. I, I think, I think you're right, that, you know, we kind of are to that point of nickel and diming, you know.
But I don't want us to do that again. I want us to say, this is what's valuable to us, and here's how we're going to support them.
Sure. And that's, that's what we can do next year.
Yeah, I know.
We do have, we do have this year in front of us.
To figure out.
You know, and, yeah, it's.
So John's suggestion, and how much are you finding elsewhere?
Well, the one that's, I mean, they'll argue with this one too, but it hasn't theoretically been already counted, is to raise that cost recovery to 30%. That's 389, almost another 400,000.
I just think that that's so hopeful at this point. I think that that's a good, I know Aaron's working really hard on cost recovery, and we're going to be seeing stuff soon-ish about cost recovery. I just think that that's too hopeful to.
Well, it's the charter you give them. If you give them, you're going to say, we'll go up to 26.
And then I.
It goes up to 26. You tell them to go up to 30, it goes up to 30. You think we'll lose some revenue because of inflation and it'll come down some? You shoot for 30 and you go 250 instead of 389.
I would rather see us have a history of, I mean, I would rather see us spending money that we have than rather than money that we might get if.
But one of the reasons we're in this problem is we have an historically terrible cost recovery rate. And we've kept building things that we don't put money in the budget to staff. And then we do it as a general tax increase.
Aaron, on cost recovery, is it at 27 coming, is that supposed to be your goal? Is that 27% for 2025? For 25, it's sitting at 27?
Well, I did the division, it's 26.4.
I think last two weeks, three weeks ago, two weeks ago, Kathy Jowzowski did point out that we promised people we weren't going to charge for those things.
I don't think that's, that wasn't true.
It was too, I was there.
Was that in the ballot measure?
It wasn't on the ballot, but it was understood and said.
A lot of things are, a lot of things are said in different meetings. If it's not in the ballot measure, it's not.
For maintenance.
Jason, I know we're having really good discussion, and I, you know, first time doing this, we are looking for a motion on the mill levy. That's what we need right.
Right now, we're doing the, the revenue neutral rate. Right now, we're doing the, the revenue neutral rate.
There's a resolution action you'll need to take before you get into making motions about your budget. I mean, we need to acknowledge you're going to exceed it and the resolution is what you need to take up first.
And that resolution doesn't have a number, it just says we're going to be over?
Yeah, that's next.
Because then we have to open up another public hearing.
In two weeks, we must have a firm number.
But we still vote on a number tonight in the next vote.
Yeah, you can pass a first reading of an ordinance adopting the budget at a certain amount. Right now, the motion reads two twenty-nine. So you can, you can talk to us about a different budget amount or a different general fund. You can decrease those values. You can tell us what you want it less in whatever revenue stream expenditure and we'll adjust it for a second reading on the seventeenth. But you do need to pass that revenue neutral resolution. Then you need to consider your second public hearing this evening. Then you can get into motions made in regard to the budget or direction for us to bring you back second reading.
Okay, so you're saying one vote's just saying, we're going to go past it. Another vote, if we want to do it, to say, here's what the number is.
When you get to the first reading of the budget ordinance?
Which is tonight?
Yes, you can give us direction on how you want us to adjust things in the budget itself.
Direction or a vote?
Well, you can vote on it. I mean, you, you, you know, you can make little motions. I want, your example tonight, you can make that in your motion and see if you.
But do you need a number passed tonight?
No, not necessarily.
Okay, okay, that's all I wanted to clarify.
So for the purpose of keeping us going through our agenda, I'm going to throw out that we had, um, we adopted a res- resolution, if I'm saying it wrong, somebody tell me, resolution number zero nine zero three two four A, levying a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate.
That's right, you can do that.
Yeah.
And is there a second?
Second.
You moved to second, could you call the roll please?
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
No.
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Micolah?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Okay.
Four to one, I mean, sorry.
Yeah. Now then, um, do we want to approve a first reading of an ordinance adopting?
We have to do a public hearing.
Jinx.
You owe me a coat.
Okay. I'm going to open a public hearing on the proposed twenty twenty-five city budget. Is there anyone who wishes to re-say something?
Scott, you've been, uh, currently the chair of the.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
I'm sorry. Currently the, the chair of the steering committee, uh, so a lot has been talked about TGT money, so just kind of wanted to go over everything, uh, with that. So it's not a property tax increase. This is all money based on tourism, so they're bringing in the dollars. It's not costing anybody anymore in property tax. Uh, by doing this, uh, obviously I sent you guys a letter on, uh, the twentieth of this month, just reiterating what our committee had kind of gone over and talked about, um, why we realize it's, it's a difficult time for you guys, uh, and I feel for the budget we're trying to do as much as we can as well. But our committee is, is, is trying to get some measurements and we're asking for sixty percent. In the past, it used to be a hundred. Obviously, we've changed, uh, over time to allow the city to take some of those money for those improvements that we do need, uh, when we do have tourism. Um, as you know, there's a large chunk of money being moved from the TGT to the general fund this year. That's not always going to be there. Um, so we've really got to figure out how we can control this. Um, you know, there's other entities. I'm a part of the Aggieville Business Association as well. Um, that's funded through the TGT money as well. Uh, so this can't be a quick fix and a plug to fix holes in the budget. Um, obviously, we had a great year after COVID. Twenty twenty-three was a historic year for us. Uh, we only took, I think, we only collected, I think, fifty, forty-five percent of what we gained that year. So our goal was, hey, we, we do want a measurement. We want to take that sixty percent, forty percent still goes back to the city, uh, and that gives us that measurement that can fund these other entities. Um, by moving one point five this year to the general fund, we understand, you know, obviously, we're not in agreement, uh, we don't want to see this become something that happens all the time. But that money would be there to fund these other areas, um, in the future. So, uh, just keep that in mind as, as you guys obviously go through these budgets. We gotta get to a budget and run a budget for the city, um, and not take from these funds that should not be being robbed from to, to fund general projects. So thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come up. Hi. Would you sign in, please?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, if, oh, thank you.
I did earlier. Do I need to sign it again? Since, since you mentioned, I just, I wanted to clarify on frivolity.
Can you state your name and?
My name is Caleb Kotman. I live at nineteen oh one Ransor Road. Uh, this community, as you guys know, is, is fairly transient in itself, not the tourists, but the community itself is fairly transient. And being here for twenty years, I've watched the city council put forth taxes on bills and I've only seen one fail. And when it did fail, the city council got on Facebook and wrote a very scathing, uh, note that this is all the things you're not going to get now. But they didn't put in the bill what they were going to use that money for. That struck me as a little childish. But just because people come and ask for things like trails and indoor pools, it doesn't mean that you have to get them. You have to be the leaders. Uh, if we can't afford it and we're not going to be able to afford it in the future, you have to say no. If a kid keeps, keeps asking for cookies, he's going to end up like a three hundred pound mazza like me. And so eventually you have to step in as leaders and just say, look, this isn't something that we can currently afford to do and we don't have a plan for it. And that was my point about frivolities. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, please. Welcome back.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Patricia Heinsohn, twenty seven thirty-four Kimball Avenue. In my past life, before I retired, I was a quality engineer in aircraft and aerospace. And I want to agree with the comments you folks made. You have to have performance measurements with these groups because it's all well and good for them to come and say, whether it's an outside group or whatever, we would like money for something. Do they do that? Do they perform? If they do not perform to the standards, there needs to be consequences when they come back the next year and say, oh, not only that, we need more. So I'm hoping that you folks, I know it's difficult because it was difficult in the aircraft industry and let me tell you, when I worked in missiles, it was even worse. So it is very difficult to do those measurements, but, and then to enforce them for people that do not perform. Thank you.
Thank you. Going to close the public hearing? Okay. Looking for direction.
Well, just make one last plea. I think we need to take it down. I mean, the, we can use this money legitimately from transient guest tax. We have street maintenance, we got the garage maintenance, the parking service, RCPD. We're totally within our, um, legality to do it. Uh, if we don't do it, we are increasing taxes than we could otherwise, um, do. And also, these are some pretty big increases we're talk, we're, um, talking about and I just can't throw those out. And I think we should do a challenge on, um, parks and rec as well as far as that cost recovery because that's, if we want to get to where we want to get to, we need to start getting that closer to what the best practice is.
So you're, you're wanting to bring it down about four hundred thousand? Is that? That's, that's half a mil?
Three sixty would be half a mil. Just throwing that out.
Um, so that's, uh, let's see, my house is valued at two hundred and fifty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars this year.
Probably save you twenty bucks.
Something like that.
Yeah, and some people, that, that makes a difference to it. Yeah, you can put them in those terms and let's take it up fifty percent because it'll only be sixty bucks or something. And then it gets compounded year after year and that's why you hear the stories that we have.
I feel like I said all the things I was going to say, Karen. Uh, I, I mean, I personally, I'm still at, at four mils.
Three point nine nine?
Three point nine nine six. Couldn't just make it easy on me to say four mil. Um, oh, three point nine nine three.
No, no, there's three more digits if you want us to get it.
No, 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 no. I, I mean, I'm still there and I think in general, I, I don't feel that we all have the same opinions on, on that money and, and people are still talking about raises versus cuts and different things where tonight, it's whether or not we're comfortable where the budget's at currently. And I'm, I'm personally comfortable with what was presented tonight and, and moving forward to a second reading. I do want us to spend some time. I don't know that we have the opportunity in the next two weeks to figure out some revenue, um, performance metrics specifically for TGT. I, I don't know that we have time to figure that out for what this year's funding should be. Um, I'm, I still don't think that money should be moved over. We just pulled one point five million dollars over. I, I want to see that stay in TGT and be used as for revenue strategies.
Are you forgiving, forgiving those increases to those agencies?
Yes. Because I, I am with performance metrics attached. Do I wish we already had those in place? Yes. I think we'll be in the same situation next year and saying, why aren't our sales tax higher? But in an ideal world, yeah.
Well, make a motion and.
John?
Yes?
Yeah. Um, John, I, I agree with you. I, I agree with holding constant the, um, the twenty twenty-four values that were awarded to the different outside agencies. I think that that's fair, but Jamie, you and I have discussed at other times, I wholly, wholly agree with you about the idea of having performance indicators. And I don't think most of our colleagues at the, um, outside agencies would object. They certainly have set indicators for themselves. They have, uh, metrics they need to meet with other funding they receive through grants or, um, state or state improvement, state, um, funding. I, as you said, I don't know if we can work on that right now in the next two weeks, but I think that is definitely something that we do need to address and be prepared, uh, to share with our community partners, uh, prior to next year's budgets, budget discussions.
Well, we probably could put together something earlier than that, I mean, before we start, you know, in January.
Yeah, I reckon we probably want to have something for the beginning of the year.
Yeah.
Right, right. Like this, I'm just saying, I don't think if, I'm not sure what we could get accomplished in two weeks before the next hearing on this year's budget.
Then would we be comfortable leaving that sitting in TGT and not allocating it, but not, not pulling it to general fund, but leaving it in TGT?
Just as a point of clarification for the commissioners, the contracts with these outside agencies are executed in December for the following year. So if you wanted to challenge those entities to bring back performance measures, they could give you that information well before December.
Okay. Um, do we want to have a discussion about our cash balance?
I mean, I think that that's valuable discussion.
I think that it's worth having this year, um, because we're, we're kind of, we, we've got kind of three, three areas here. Um, it seems like we've, we've, we've hit that ten million, or that roughly ten million dollar goal here, but, um, you know, we're not hitting any other goals. So can we get closer on other things without getting that goal, uh, with the cash balance? And I, I think we probably could, uh, and still have a comfortable cash balance.
Um. Peter, I, I, I've had the same question. Would it be possible to, for example, I'm, I'm a little bit distressed about putting off capital improvements. We've all seen the effects of inflation in the last five years. The longer we put off maintenance activities beyond HVAC, uh, replacement, it's only going to cost more. I'm, I'm not happy about that being removed. You know, I've been a strong proponent of fiscal responsibility. It affects our bond rating as a city. If we don't have an adequate cash balance, we've seen that in our recent downgrade. Um, so I, I, I think that is a tact that we need to try to pursue.
Jason, can we see that projection, you know, the graph that looks like this?
Yeah.
You know what I'm talking about, right?
Because where I'm thinking is, we've made, I think, some pretty, we've made some cuts. Um, I don't know exactly how I would classify them, but we've made some cuts in expenses. Um, and if, if we can keep from getting to that four mil, um, I think that would show some good progress.
So my encouragement to you from a actual perspective versus a budget perspective, a budget passed with the authority gives you flexibility. Capital improvements could be, could make their way into a budget that performs within the level you pass. At forty-seven million for the general fund and at two hundred and twenty-nine million overall, there's capacity to do projects. Where I get nervous is when we start trying to move the budget up and your revenues don't come in. And then you've got this, this double whammy hitting you in terms of creating a bigger gap. So the revenues are very, they're very important. The expense side, you will, you, you have capacity in your budgets. But when you increase that revenue stream to opt, to, to, you, you're, you're increasing the budget. So in effect, the two twenty-nine has to stay two twenty-nine or come down. But as administration, my caution to you is you need to watch your revenues before we sit in this room today and commit to a capital improvement program for next year. That's my caution. There's a ten million dollar forecasted cash balance. We have to wait and kind of see how this plays out. By January at the retreat, much like we did last year, okay, here's our reality. This is what we anticipate the end of the year to be. You may have a different cash balance than the one projected here within this, this framework. But we've got some assumptions, we can make those. Um, but this, this is the twenty-five projected, thirty-eight million in expenses, thirty-six point eight in revenues. It eats into that cash balance a little bit already with that scenario. There are, there's a lot of moving parts when it comes to that revenue stream. Uh, and taking those expenses out at this point in time allows you an opportunity to have expenses and revenues meet.
So the thirty-six, that's, uh, that doesn't match what's on the mill levies.
Right, that's.
Oh, that's forecasted twenty twenty. Um.
From a revenue perspective?
Yeah.
All property taxes?
Yeah.
That's all, this is, this is all general fund revenues. Up here on those sheets, it's all property taxes levied.
Man, this is confusing.
It is. There's another, there's a, a revenue, so this is what you have in your budget. This is your budget detail. This will get you every revenue stream, you know, we have within the, the city itself. There's this eleven million dollar cash balances is a result of moving the money that we've talked about it with ARPA and TGT to start the year at eleven. And then all our other revenue streams, you can see just this group of taxes alone, which include abvolorum and a lot of your sales tax, this twenty-two and this eleven, this thirty-three million is a, a pretty substantial part of your forty-seven overall. But you do get in, and I would. But you do get in, and I would, there's, there's some transfers that come from sales tax funds that are pretty substantial as well, uh, that make up 7 million of that. So you take the seven, the 11 and the 22, you, you've got a lot of our revenue streams right there. So just wanted to highlight this, this detailed budget, um, sheet, um, was in your, the original draft was in your packet in eight 13. We'll update this, uh, as part of your packet for the 17th.
Jason, where's interest income in there?
Rena or Rebecca, help me out. Is that part of the?
It's where the transfers are.
Section 36, so.
There you go. That's at 900K.
Okay.
And you can see where our actuals were 897 last year. In the general fund. We did have other investment income go other places, but this is what came back to the general fund.
And the one-time, um, payment we get of the 5% for specials when we go to bond from temporary notes? Where's that?
It goes, if you scroll up, Jason, it's the three, four administrative fees.
This one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I thought it was like.
Got 250 last year. It's always a matter of just how much you're.
Yeah, I thought it was more like 400,000.
Um, for 2024, it will be, but we don't know how much we're gonna have for 2025. The number of special assessment projects are going down.
But for 2024, instead of the 100,000, we got 400,000.
That's a budgeted amount.
Yeah. So the actuals are closer to 400? Yeah.
Yeah. It's another 300,000.
It does show up in that projected number that we have for overall revenues that we've supplied for 2024. It's different than the budget number.
We're pretty concerned in the revenues and, and I appreciate that so that we're not digging a deeper hole.
Anything else on this chart you wanted to talk about or draw attention to?
I just, I mean, I do think it's important. We talked about cash, uh, go back down. I mean, please go back down, Jason. Thank you. Um, in talking about.
She sit there.
Cash, in talking about the, the cash balances, we still are, you know, our revenue streams are still not there. This is still, this is showing four mils. If we move four mils, some conservative projections, of course, but we really don't, we're, we're never gonna be 100% accurate on that. So in, in discussing where we want to be, I think it's important we look at where we want to be this year and what that means, well, this year, next year and the next year. I don't, it's hard to talk about this year as 2025, but where we want to be in 2025 and seeing how that also impacts 2026 as well. So if we, if we mess with those anymore now, if, if we think we wanna, or comfortable reducing those, it's just by this is gonna be worse than following.
Is that, is that 26, um, revenue number? Is that with a flat mill levy?
I think we have revenues and expenditures increasing at 3% for both.
Okay. So that, I mean, that would just probably just be valuation increase?
Yeah.
Highly likely.
And we're still, we're still?
It just starts to grow again. I mean, again, we're gonna, this is where, you know, some of your guys' analysis and structural and looking back into growth initiatives and the way we're structured as an organization. I know there were some criticisms about the, uh, the indoor water, but there was another piece to that element of a sales tax becoming a, a driver towards a park and rec, uh, long-term plan financially. Again, it's an additional revenue stream, but you know, to go back out, it would free up quite a substantial amount of property taxes that could be utilized in the general fund and talk about a lot of the things we, we've kicked around tonight that we're not doing by way of equipment, vehicles and, um, capital improvements. You know, it's, at some point, we gotta, we have to level off and, and let the valuation growth in this community and the sales tax growth in this community incrementally pay for what it is we need.
We hope.
We hope, right? That's, that's, but we gotta get close, we gotta get close to where these things even out and then allow that conversation to happen. It may take a point one percent or point two percent type of permanent type of question, a point three or a point four. You've got two sales tax that are gonna come within the next three years that you know street maintenance and you know, uh, park and rec are, are, are looking at increases. They're looking at being more aggressive and they're looking at covering operational side of things rather than just projects. And those are the things that the community is gonna have to give us feedback on. Are you willing to renew? Are you willing to increase to look at operations or is it flat? Is it right where it's at today and we're, we're back into another revenue stream or a restructure in terms of the services we provide?
We're not gonna get ourselves out of this hole this year.
You never do. It's always a constant conversation in our community. It, it just is. There, we're approached for a lot of things. We're approached for a lot of different perspect, from a lot of different perspectives, a lot of wants, a lot of desires, but we're also out there three to five years trying to project where that growth is going to take place, making sure infrastructure is there, making sure we have the resources there to augment and facilitate that growth. There's not a lot of other municipalities or governing entities in your community doing that. And that, that's, it's one of the first slides we talked about in April. There are a number of growth-related initiatives we are actively doing. We have a lot of staff studying. We have a lot of energy and effort and time and resources going into those things. You wanna draw this back and basically take a flat line of where Manhattan's at right now, there, there are things that would have to come off that table significant. And I, I don't say that to be threatening at all. It's just historically Manhattan has tried to be out there three to five years and anticipating that growth and being there so that growth doesn't pass by Manhattan and that opportunity.
And, and I think we, we, I'm not sure if we missed some opportunities, but I, I do think we need to be forward-thinking. I think, you know, this is, we are responsible not just for the Manhattan of today, but the Manhattan of tomorrow. And that sounds trite, but there's an awful lot of people in the community who want to be living in the Manhattan of the 1970s and 80s. And we're not there anymore. We, we need to be competitive with other communities. You know, Joe can bring in his, his illustrations about, uh, population growth being stagnant. What do we do to change that? And I, we can only do as much as we can think of with, and we can approve with our community partners. It's.
And if we do have the, the carryover of eight million dollars, we are insulated from some major, um, breakages, can we say, if a giant tree falls on City Hall or something? So Jamie, do you want?
Yeah, I, I just need some direction. I mean, I'm comfortable with what was presented, so I just would like some flipping through my book, some direction on, uh.
I think then you would approve.
I would just approve the first read. Do I have to say anything other than that? Okay.
Nope.
Um, I motion, we approve the first reading of an ordinance adopting the 2025 city budget as is.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think, John, you gotta?
Yeah, I mean, then we're just kicking the can again. We're not, I mean, I heard Susan saying she was willing to agree with me on the transit guest tax. Peter, you tended to be that, Karen, you as well. That could be, we could take it down 400,000 tonight.
That's, that's kicking a different can down the road.
No, but it's, it's, it's making a decision.
I mean, John, I think you keep saying kicking the can because you anticipate we're gonna come down. I want to point out.
Yeah, you don't want to come down. You want to keep this tax increase.
This is unfortunately, and that's where, when I have to pick what I'm gonna get hammered about, is it gonna be, I, I'll take the four mils knowing that we're managing our budgets tighter this year within the city. And, and that's, that's the decision I've had to come to through lots of things. So I'm not kicking it can down. This is where I think we need to be for next year.
I think often, um, people don't realize how little we save by going down a half a mil. I mean, how little we save each individual by going, you know, like on my house, it would probably be 60 bucks.
Oh, I know. That's always the argument. It's just a little, it's just a little bit here, a little bit there. And that's why we've got people that aren't moving to our community or people that are gonna have to move out of their house because no one ever want to take a stand or draw a line with this thing. I know we're always gonna be one tax increase away from nirvana and prosperity. It's not gonna happen. We passed the sales tax for the street maintenance. What do people think about the street maintenance? We pass that next sales tax, can bring in all that revenue? Same discussion will be happening later.
Okay. I have a motion in a second. Um, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Mata?
No.
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner, Mayor Protim McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
No.
Motion carries three to two.
Okay. And we also have a chance in two weeks to go through this again. So, um, we'll move on to the general agenda. Um, this is considering changes to the Manhattan Development Code. Are there any comments from the public on this? I'm sorry, what?
Presentation first.
Oh, presentation first. Yeah, sorry. Thank goodness I have you.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Protim, Mayor, members of the commission. John Adams, Assistant Director of Community Development. Another handful of amendments to the development code. A lot of these, I'm, I'm gonna cover some of the things first. We're, we noticed some changes had been made to the sign regulations that were not generally known to all of staff. And so we ran into some problems. We thought, okay, let's fix them. Let's roll it back to what it was more like before. Um, we are creating a new land reserve district. It was an idea we batted around a few years ago. We have some examples where land has been annexed into the city. They weren't sure what they wanted to do. We wanted to give them, or they wanted city services, but if they just wanted to stay in a neutral position, this gives us just another tool in that toolbox. Uh, new site and design standards for the downtown commercial district. Um, these are kind of a, a lighter version of what we did with Aggieville after the adoption of the Aggieville plan in 2017. Um, and so, um, these, these are a very light version of that. Same sort of thing, new plan. Let's start enacting that plan. And then, um, we tweaked some of the language and zoning criteria and then throughout, peppered throughout, there's a few other changes, uh, some parking ratios, um, changes. Doesn't, doesn't really amount to like earth-shattering sort of material. Um, in the analysis, that's required that the planning board, um, went through. Number one asks, what is the public benefit? The new site and design standards will ensure the development maintains and enhances the pedestrian-friendly urban form in the downtown because it requires certain amount of glazing at the ground floor. It requires, um, facing the street, being closer to it or closer to the sidewalk, rather. Number two, compliance with the purposes of the MDC. Uh, the changes, this is the same finding that was made when we first adopted this. Changes adhere to the purposes of the development code that are enacted or laid out. And then I go into more detail in the, in the staff report if you looked at that. Number three, areas it'll be most affected by the changes, uh, really the only one is the CD district. It'll have new design standards. Uh, number two, for, uh, the necessity of the amendment because of changing conditions, conditions. Um, the one that's, only one that's driving these changes, um, because of changed conditions is the new downtown plan. All the rest are, let's get some of these things fixed that we've noticed over the last year of use again. And five, consistency with the comprehensive plan. Uh, again, very little change. It's consistent overall with comp plan. So the planning board did recommend approval. Uh, they did have, um, they did vote in a confused somewhat manner to remove one of the, um, ideas or the changes that have been put in there. So, um, that parking waiver, a power for the city manager in a, um, in a Tiff district, uh, is not, um, gonna be part of the adopted draft. We are gonna re-workshop that, see if it can be more palatable because it was not to the city or to the planning board and we might come back with it someday, but right now, it's not, it was not vital, uh, for that.
Is the planning board unanimous?
Well, on their first vote, they were, and then it got a little bit confused there. So, um, ultimately it did pass, but it was not unanimous, I would say on, not everyone agreed to delete, take that one out. But like I said, it was.
You'll work it out?
Yeah. We'll work.
Wasn't it four, two, one?
Yeah.
Cause it, uh, cause there were still some that didn't like the grocery thing? Was that it?
That's correct. Yes.
So what was the controversy over the grocery?
I, I think those are two different things having to do with the city manager being able to, um, override parking regulations. And then separate from that was the size of the footprint of a possible supermarket.
Right. So one change we recommended was, uh, right now in the CD district, which is downtown commercial, there is a size cap on grocery stores of 25,000 square feet. We looked at that and said, well, why not? Who's gonna build a 25,000 square foot one? And, um.
John, excuse me, I'm sorry for interrupting, but could you give us a parallel? What does a 25,000 square foot building look like?
Yeah, the, sorry, mayor. Um, the old raised Apple market is just about 25,000 square feet.
Which, which one?
Um, the one on Leavenworth and, uh, Sixth.
Fifth.
Fifth. Yeah, yeah.
So like a, is, like, Dylan's is larger than 25,000, like West Side Dylan's?
Hy-Vee, 77,000 square feet.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
And both Dylan's are bigger than that.
Okay, so we were pretty significantly limiting the size of those grocery stores.
Yeah. Realistically, the land assemblage, um, alone is gonna be limiting. And I don't think we're gonna see in the downtown any new grocery stores unless they go two-story.
Okay.
How about a Trader Joe's?
Yeah.
One of the, um, priorities that I've talked about several times is I would actually like to see more grocery stores in our residential neighborhoods, but not of this size. I'm aware that, um, Aggieville is, you know, has floated ideas about putting a supermarket closer there, um, to, to be closer to the university, to be closer to that northeast residential area. But my thought is more, uh, a square block of, of a residential area for a, a small grocery store. I'm a little bit concerned about the largeness of this, uh, the variance in the, in these codes.
However, if we were to get a Sprouts or a Trader Joe's, we probably could do a PUD, right?
That's always an option, yes. The, the one thing also is that there is a, um, maximum parking lot coverage, um, in the sites, standards as well, 50%. No more than 50% of each site could be covered. So again, that's why I said, I'm not really, that, this is the CD district only. The only district that has that cap on, uh, grocery store size, the proposal is just to remove that cap and put it on the same footing as all the other commercial districts.
So building, sorry, bu, building coverage, that reduces, that makes it so that the building can occupy more space on the lot? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And it went from 35% to 50%?
Uh, this is, um, right now, um, if you choose to do parking, uh, let me, let me flip it a little bit. Right now, you can do 100% coverage in the downtown. You're not required to do parking. A new business might decide to do parking, but we're capping how much of that lot can be devoted to parking.
Got it, okay.
Yes. So that's the 50%.
Great.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think in reading through it, a lot of it makes sense. I think my only concern is if, sometimes we tend to put, uh, requirements around there that can make it more costly for individuals to come in and want to redevelop or move into an area. And so I think just making sure that, I mean, I'm not an architect. I, I don't know. I'm not a designer. I'm not any of those things to know if, if this does that to any, but I think that's the only caution I have is just not wanting to add expense. But I do understand wanting to keep specifically like downtown Manhattan, keep that in a similar vibe is the word I'll use. That'd be my only thought.
I, I really don't feel like they're exorbitant. A, a lot of it's just put a little bit of detail into it, um, you know, some architectural interest. And then I, to me, the most important thing is that first 20 feet of the building because that's where your eyes are as a pedestrian. Because that's where your eyes are as a pedestrian. And when you're walking by, if it's just a blank wall for a long, long distance with no, no transparency between you and inside, you're kind of ruining the realm.
Um, I had a question about the accessory residential uses. Can you, um, just kind of expand on that a little bit more?
Um, I put that in the definition or added that in the definition, um, because, one, we might someday be at a point where we wanna have ADUs in this community.
Sure.
But right now, there are existing ADUs.
Mm-hmm.
And so, um, we're making this, um, that, they're just grandfathered, or they were built at a time when it was legal.
Okay.
Anyway, because we're addressing those setbacks from the alley, I thought, oh, let's name them so that they are covered by this protection.
Got it. So this doesn't allow?
Create them, no, no.
Okay.
No.
I'm sorry, Peter, I, I didn't quite understand that exchange. Can you repeat your comment? And John, can you use your response?
Yes, so I had asked about, um, gosh, I'm trying to find exactly where it was.
We did use, and?
There was a, there was, there is a section on accessory residential uses. Here it is.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, section twenty-six-two F-two. Um, and it, it strikes some things out of the definition. Um, and basically just strikes some, strikes some things out and mentions where you can find, um, I guess, more uses or more definitions for, for that. Um, I was just curious about kind of what exactly that does, um, for those accessory residential uses.
Oh, okay. I was looking at the wrong section. So that, um, accessory residential uses are, um, just going to be things like garages, sheds, or in, like I said, we do have a few accessory dwelling units that are grandfathered in town.
Mm-hmm.
So that was, uh, so this, this change goes with another small change, uh, later on. And then also with the change to the definition of accessory structure.
Okay.
Yes. It, it's all part of a suite.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Does the change to an accessory structure limit the use, the renovation of an existing structure to be a small home?
Um, the, if you have an existing one, um, one, it does not allow you to convert because we just don't allow those right now. Um, two, if you have an existing one, uh, for non-conforming uses, we do allow you to keep them, um, remodeled or, you know, keep them in good shape, keep them repaired. You cannot increase the degree of non-conformity, meaning you cannot add rooms or units or add on to the building. But you can, within the existing envelope, uh, keep it up to shape, keep it in, um, in good repair. Did that answer your question, Mayor?
I think so. Thank you.
So we're really just more clearly defining these accessory structures in, in the code?
Yes.
Yeah, cause it goes from generally to accessory structures.
Yeah.
Uh, in the definition, so.
More questions?
No, I, I had, I was gonna ask about the parking waiver and ask why we don't just do away with minimums in, in the TIF districts. Um, I know we, there are no minimums in, in downtown commercial district and, um, you know, obviously that's fully built out. We're not really gonna see a lot of new construction there, but, um, I think it worked out. Um, so, but?
On that, Peter.
But we took it out, so it's not on the table right now.
I mean, we can put it back on the table. That's, I mean, that is up to us to put it back on the table. Um, I also, if, if we do think it's most appropriate to go through whichever? Planning board, thank you at this point.
I think it would probably be good to, to go through those channels and, and allow some public comment on it. I don't know that we'd wanna do anything right now.
Yeah, I don't wanna add that back.
Sorry, John, please go ahead.
No, I said I don't wanna add that back to the ordinance.
You do not want to add what?
That, add back that the city manager, at his discretion, can waive the, um, parking requirement.
Oh, no, I wasn't, I wasn't talking about adding that. I was, I was talking about just getting rid of parking minimums in general. But yeah, we should not do that tonight. So?
All right, sorry, guys, let's all get together. Um, I also am ambivalent or queer questioning whether city manager should have the authority to, um, do away with parking minimums. Can you, Peter and John, can you please restate your place, your points of view?
Oh, that, um, the, the city manager waiving parking minimums has been removed.
Thank you, okay.
Um, it's, it's just as it, as it was, uh, prior to any of these changes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other comments by anybody? Public comment?
Well, again, it's Ken Evert. Um, I am a member of the, uh, planning board. And I just wanna, uh, emphasize one, uh, specific item. I think I've kind of taken the reading here, but I wanna make sure that I make my point. The, the, uh, uh, item on the waiver of the parking, having the privilege, uh, the city manager having the privilege to, or the opportunity to waive that, uh, I strongly, um, urge you to not, uh, put that back in. The planning board did recommend all the changes that were, uh, put, put forth to us, with that exception. And I'm encouraging you to maintain that. The, as you all know, parking has been and always has been a big issue in our community. We spend a lot of time in rezoning, uh, PUDs and so on, and I don't, uh, think that you wanna give that, uh, decision to someone else. The, the, the city commission always has the ultimate, uh, decision to make when it comes to those kinds of things. So that's, I just wanted to emphasize that. And the meeting was very confusing for a number of reasons. And, uh, I wanted to make sure that you, I'm not speaking on behalf of the planning board. I'm speaking on behalf of myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, would anybody like to make a motion to approve the first reading?
Please?
Sorry, I just wanna make sure. John, I was going through the, the staff report in the agenda. And, uh, section twenty-six, seven B-three, off-street parking, item number four. The city manager, at their discretion, may reduce or waive the parking requirements. That's still not struck out? It's highlighted green as an addition?
Right, so what you got was the staff report with the attachment that went to the planning board?
Mm-hmm.
So that's been amended by their action and their recommendation.
Okay.
I just, we didn't, if I thought about it, I would have given you a, a one without it.
Sure, and is that updated in the draft ordinance?
If you go into, there's a long listing of all the numbers.
Yeah.
And I went through it, and I couldn't find the number that matched that in the listing of what we're approving.
Yeah.
I had to do it about three times to?
Section twenty-six, seven B.
Your, your final ordinance will be accurate. This is the first reading, and it's, again, a reflection of where the planning board was.
Okay.
We, if you make a motion to approve, it'll be identical to what the planning board passed.
Okay, then I will, uh, move to approve the first reading of an ordinance, amending the Manhattan Development Code.
Second.
I move in second. Would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes, with reservations, I want to see the revised, uh, uh, resolution.
We will see that for sure when we set, have the second reading.
Thank you.
Mayor Protim McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
I move we adjourn the September third, twenty twenty-four city commission meeting.
I second.
Susan's seconding.
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Mayor Protim McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.